Good morning, everyone. Today is our town council regular meeting Wednesday, December 1st, 2021, 8:00 AM, in the Town Hall Green Room. We all now stand for the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with authority and justice for all.
All right, on to item number two, which is visitors. Are there any visitors that would like to be recognized at this time? Any visitors or anybody that wants to talk today, please go over to the microphone here so that they can get you on the video, in audio.
Good morning, council. I'm Tom Schultz. I'm the Chair of the Human Rights Committee. I just have a brief statement I'd like to read. I'm here to endorse the two student advisor applicants, Jose Rodriguez and Leah Scopa, who are on the council agenda this morning for your approval. Jose Rodriguez, known to friends and family as Abel, is a junior at Morgan and ranked fourth in his class academically. Abel is a member of the Morgan Justice Club and serves as the Board of Education Student Representative. He has been recently selected as one of the new poet laureate interns. Leah Scope is also an academic achiever at Morgan. She was a founding member of the Morgan Justice Club when it was created last year. A stan at sophomore, Leah is a writer and reporter for the student newspaper, The Morgan Paw Print. Among her broad interests and achievements, Leah performs in modern dance competitions. Six remarkable students applied for these two seats on the Human Rights Committee, which gives me great hope for the future of our community, and choosing only two is a difficult process. But I am confident our very first student advisors have much to offer. I hope you will agree and approve their appointments. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any other visitors?
Yes.
Phil.
Good morning, council. Good morning, Mr. Town Manager. Good morning, Ms. Scatino. We miss you greatly. I just want to say that I didn't realize how much I missed this until I walked in here this morning, but I'm sure after attending a few meetings, I will be cured of that feeling. But it is nice to be here, and I'm glad we're meeting in person, and I wish you well and to have a good meeting and make decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Good morning. My name is Jane Scully-Welton, and I would like to be considered, I'm not sure it's on the agenda, but for the Blight Complaint Committee or Board. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I'd like to be considered. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to now item number three, which is the approval of the amendments from the November 17th, 2021 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
No move.
A second?
Second.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
You want to rule call? And then we'll be good with that.
Okay. All right, item number four, which is the appointments and reappointments. So we have obviously a whole bunch of items here. The first on the agenda would be Eric Bergman for the Sustainability Committee. Do we have a motion to?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Next on the item is for the Human Rights Committee student members, Jose Rodriguez and Leah Scopa. Obviously, we just heard from Tom, so do we have a motion to approve those two student members?
I'll make that motion.
A second? Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Now, we're on to the Blight Hearing Board and Blight Officer. So, I have a conversation about this. I know a couple of people have approached Carl. Obviously, Jane just spoke here, so there needs to be a three-member hearing board. So we have had some people that have come forth. I don't know if we want to make a final decision, or if there's names that people have heard from, or people that they've heard from. I'll just let Carl speak quickly to the couple of people that he spoke to, and obviously we have Jane, and then we can kind of take it from there.
As I noted at the last meeting, Dave Adams expressed interest, who's currently on the Harbor Commission, and then former town council member Tim Guera also expressed an interest.
And do you want to explain the role of the hearing board for people who may not want me to do it?
The hearing board is part of the updated ordinance for blight. It's meant to be the hearing board when an individual wants to contest a determination of blight as found by the blight officer. In order to have, by state statute, in order to have penalties associated with a violation of blight, you have to have a hearing officer or a hearing mechanism. In this particular case, it would be a hearing board of three individuals.
Carl, I'm sorry, I missed the first name. I got Jane, I got Tim. What was the other name?
Dave Adams.
Dave Adams, thank you.
Can I ask a question at this point? So, looking for a blight officer, how can we publicize the fact that we are looking for someone for that position? I mean, we are looking for, or are we looking for that? I mean, this is a discussion for the town manager and the building official, correct?
The ordinance says that the blight officers are the town manager, or his designee, and the building official, or his designee. So, the way the old ordinance read was first selectmen, or their designee. So we were operating with the designee of the first selectman. That's how we're continuing to operate right now. Richard and I have to have a conversation about who we're going to designate.
So if someone was interested at the end of the day, they would go to the town manager and let you know that they are interested?
If they were interested in being deputized, yes.
Okay. And is there some way to, I mean, clearly, you and Richard, who happens to be here, have to have that conversation, but when you have come to a conclusion, is there going to be some publicity for the fact that we perhaps would be looking for a blight officer?
If we don't address it with internal resources already identified, it would be a non-paid position.
Oh, I know. I know.
Thankful.
Okay.
I have a comment to it. I think it's very important everybody understands the legal ramifications of the position. When you put people in this type of position, they need to have a very full understanding of what is considered blight, and probably somebody has some sort of land use responsibilities at some point in their past history, who has analyzed that type of language, understands how to interpret that kind of language. It also needs to be somebody who's unbiased in the community. We certainly had issues in the past where blight has become targeted towards people based on who they were in the community. So I think it's very important this becomes a very unbiased position, and a position where somebody has legal understanding, because we do not want the town to get into very long, embroiled legal matters, because it will cost the town. That was just my thoughts on it.
Anyone else? I mean, I think that the ordinance that we put in place is hopefully going to eliminate a lot of that. Obviously, in the past, there was no hearing, there was no hearing board that somebody can go to. You know, and obviously, blight is an issue in our town. Everybody knows it, everybody sees it. So I think this ordinance that we have in place will hopefully alleviate some of that and make people feel more comfortable that they can come forward, and that the people that have been, you know, accused, or, you know, as far as the blight goes, that they will have a non-biased, you know, conversation with three individuals that, you know, can make a decision going forward. So I think at least this is a first step to get this whole process moving. I think we've heard a lot about it in the past, and it's something I think that the council has to act on. So, you know, whether or not we want to wait and maybe confirm, I don't know if, I know Carl's talked briefly to Tim, I don't know if, you know, we would like to follow up with that, you know, as well, to see if he's definitely something that he'd be interested in doing, and then maybe table this until the next meeting, and then, you know, go forward with any of these appointments at the next meeting. And then maybe open it up and see if there is anybody else that may be interested in doing it. So, I mean, I think at this point, maybe if we're comfortable with just tabling this until the next meeting, then at least we can, you know, kind of move forward at that point.
All right, I would say that I would like to get it finalized next meeting, because we'll get it moving, get the process moving.
Agreed.
So, let's get it done.
All right, everybody good with that?
Any motion to table?
Yep.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained? Thank you. We'll now move on to the Police Pension Committee. This again is going to be an appointment, I'm looking for maybe a motion to appoint here. Reappoint, obviously, Ed Testman is on this currently, and then appoint Tom Hollinger to the Police Pension Committee. So if we can look for a motion to approve Tom Hollinger and to Ed Testman to the Police Pension Committee.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just in terms of background, Police Pension Committee does manage, obviously, the pension and has to have some sort of background, financial background. I'm just curious, I don't know everybody's background, Tom Hollinger's and/or Ed Testman's, they specifically have those qualifications?
They do. Tom, you can speak to your qualifications if you want. Been a banker for?
Fifty years.
Your whole life.
I was formerly on the Pension Committee when I was on the Board of Finance. I'm familiar with what's necessary. I know we don't meet that often, but I did it for several years while I was Chairman of the Board of Finance, and I look forward to doing it again.
Anything else? Okay, we'll look for the motion then to appoint Tom Hollinger and Ed Testman to the Police Pension Committee.
We have the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second? There we go. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Thank you. And lastly, Town Council Liaison to Inland Wetlands Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. This was put off from the last meeting. Currently, we have pretty much everybody that has been appointed to liaison to a committee and/or board. Christine, you're the only one that hasn't been. Would you be willing to take this on?
I don't think that night is something I can participate on, unfortunately.
All right.
Have to serve on a different one if it's on a different night.
Okay. Hope this is what we have left, so, I mean, at this point, table it again. Make a motion to table this appointment again? So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. On to item number five, which is the School Roofing Project Committee. Obviously, this is the end-all of this committee. In all the work, obviously, congratulations, and thank you to all the people that worked on this committee for many, many years. At this point, it's basically looking for just a motion to adjourn this committee. But once again, thank you to everybody that served on this and worked on this project. So at this point, that's what we will look for, is just a motion to the School Roofing Committee, Project Committee, right? So disband that committee.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. As a member of that committee, I'd just like to say, I'd like to publicly announce that Mary Ann O'Donnell was superintendent. She was on the committee. The chairman was Mike Horniac, Jack Sherbin, and Gonzalo Carion from the School Maintenance Department. I just wanted to add that this has been a long, drawn-out thing, as you know, for many years, four or five phases. It finally puts a cap on every roof on all the schools in our town, and hopefully, they're good for at least 25, 30 years, because that's all the warranties that we got. I just wanted to give a comment about this Gonzalo Carion. I mean, in the last year or so, that man really went above and beyond, working with our Works at the Clark, and things of that nature. It was very, I just wanted to comment the man. He was up on the roof, all over the place, besides his duties with the regular Clinton education, watching over all the maintenance department. Guy really went out of his way. And I just wanted to say, because this gets overlooked a lot, some of the remaining money that we saved on one project, I think it's the Joel School, we actually came in $945,000 under, and on the Elliot School, we came in $149,000 approximately. And so I just want the taxpayers to know that sometimes these committees do work, work hard. We had great architects, we worked hard with them, and just want to let the town know that we're just not rubber-stamping things and spending our money. We really did a good job in spending money here. Also, I mean, out of total projects that we did spend, hopefully, I think the percentage that we will give back, reimburse from the state, is in the neighborhood of about 46%. So we will get a sizable amount of money back from the state, hopefully this fiscal year, but if not, definitely next year. So I just want to say to that committee, and there was other people on that have left because it's been going on for, like I said, four, five, six years, eight years, thank you to all those individuals that did that work and stayed with it.
Thank you, Dennis. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Thank you again, everyone. Next item is number six, the Council Discussion on Future Projects. Does anybody have any comments, questions?
I've got a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just something that I wanted to put up for discussion. So, you know, I got the new orientation package from Carl, and my first thought was, well, we need to go in and review the goals. They probably should be updated every year. I'm going to pass this around. And so when I started going through the goals, which I'm passing around there, the goals, as Carl would say in the orientation package, should be long-term for the betterment of the town, and they're very well-written, and they're not short-term goals that are written in here, if I have the right ones here. They're high-level strategic goals. So as a committee, I don't think we really need to update them, maybe tweak them a little bit, but they're very good. What I expected to see when I went in there was more specific, something for projects, and I think we need to drill down to the next level. So underneath that second thing is a project log, and so what I would like to see is for us as a committee to fill this project, something similar to this. I'm not, you know, married to what it looks like or anything like that, but, you know, I've worked in corporate business for 30 years, multiple companies, and whenever we have a project, we have like a log like this, and it makes for a efficient meeting. And really, most importantly, as a council, we fill this out with five, six, seven things. We prioritize them, and we give it to Carl, and I talked to Carl about it. You know, he wants direction from us and prioritization of what he should be focusing on. So I wrote some things in here, but don't get lost in what's written here. You know, we would fill this in as a committee with, you know, maybe we have a separate workshop, or we do it in this session, I don't know. But we fill it out with, you know, eight things, and we prioritize it, and then each meeting, we, you know, quickly can go through this and say, all right, where does this stand? Where does this stand? And, you know, Carl said that he would like somebody from the town council to be assigned to each project, so it's not all on his plate, and they report on it together. They work on it behind the scenes, and then when we come to this meeting, we report on it. So I'd like to make, you know, a proposal that we start using something like this as a project log.
I agree. I think that it would be, it would almost force us to address issues that are all around us. For instance, the one that screams at me is the ARPA money, and we have a budget coming up fast and furiously, and I'd really like to be able to put that on the table, talk about the public hearing, talk about the public meeting, schedule them for January, get that done before we're knee-deep in budget. I mean, it's money waiting for us to spend, and I think that that should be a fun and easy job.
Anyone else?
I think this is terrific. I think it's a great idea. Off the top of my head, I would like to add senior services. How are we addressing that? And now that we, I understand, have an employee tasked with getting the ball rolling, I think I personally would like to stay on top of something like that and see how that's progressing. I think this is a terrific idea, and probably more valuable than committee liaisons where you can actually read the minutes.
Yeah, and this is an Excel spreadsheet. I just printed it out so that we had something to look at. You know, I don't know what the protocol is for emailing around, but, you know, we could email this around if that's allowed, and, you know, and have it sort of a working document.
Anyone else? I mean, I think it's a great idea as well. I mean, and some of the stuff that, I mean, this is why this is, there's an ongoing agenda item that we have on here, which is the Council Discussion on Future Projects. So it's something that we had spoken about in the past, that we needed to make sure that we stayed at the forefront of the things that we wanted to get done in town, that we are working on. A lot of the things that, basically, the bigger projects are the things that we're working on, you know, are kind of more so long-term goals, but I understand that keeping them at the forefront, making sure that we're still talking about it, there's discussions about it, so that people understand we are, obviously, Pearson, you have listed on here, that's an ongoing project that Carl's worked on since he got here. So, you know, that's something that's, you know, a future project that down the road, you know, once things get worked out on that end, things that, some of the things that we can't talk about, or, you know, that we've had discussions about in executive session. So I think it's a great idea. I think every two weeks, obviously, we meet, you know, so these discussions that we can have, that list these, and then maybe every meeting, come back and have it be a working document, and have it be, you know, there are things that people are interested in doing, you know, committed to doing. I'm sure some things that more people are interested in doing and working on than others, but at least it is a working document, and it's something that we can discuss as we have in the past, but, you know, just something more concrete, I guess. So, and again, we can't, yes, Carl needs direction from us, but there's also stuff that I don't think we need to pile on and, you know, and give him a laundry list of stuff, you know, that he would need to do, knowing that he has other jobs and responsibilities with the town as well. So the council itself has to take on a lot of this as well, before we kind of filter it off to Carl, maybe to finalize, or to, you know, or questions that we may have as a council, talking about it. Are there, you know, things that we need, more information that we would need, would be something that Carl could help us with, so.
May I ask how we might move this ARPA along? Do I make a motion for this to happen? I really would personally like to see this, the public being involved sooner than the public hearing and meeting, because they do need to hear about this rather than be surprised, and then schedule those for January so we can get going? How does that happen? How do I make?
Yeah, I mean, we discussed this at length in the past, and I think everybody on the council, the new members have gotten the information that we had talked about in the past. There was an October, end of October deadline on a plan that we needed to submit to the Treasury, which obviously was extended out until April. So, you know, we had time, you know, obviously, to look at it, because people were, once we discussed it, then there were more things that we wanted to look into, because, believe it or not, yes, there's money that we need to spend, but we're also, there's directives as far as what we can spend the money on. So the issue became, you know, what can we spend this money on, and where is it best spent? So, yes, I guess those are conversations that we can have. I don't even know if there's a final, I don't think we've discussed that final list of items that we want to put on this.
I believe Carl said that it would involve a workshop with us all?
We should have a workshop, yeah, for the council to.
For us as a council first to get to that list of items that we want to have on this. So I mean, if that's something that, you know, that we should work towards doing, then we can arrange for a workshop, so we can sort of finalize kind of a laundry list of items that we would like to spend this money on, and then at that point, we can present that to the public.
May we have that workshop before our next meeting?
Could we? That depends on everyone's availability. I mean, we can send an email to everybody, and they see if everybody's available to have a meeting.
That'd be great.
So we can do that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, we can try to get that done. Anyone else? All good?
So, the next step on this log, maybe I can send it to you, Chris, and you can send it out to everybody, and everyone can sort of look at the list and fill it in, fill in what they want?
Sure.
And maybe pick one of them to be the, like, head person.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the discussion, you know, whether or not we discuss it as a council, as a group, I think, which is what we would probably want, is more input from the whole council. I think that would be more beneficial, so that these items that we have on this list that we, as a council, discuss it under this agenda item that we have every two weeks, and then it's open for discussion amongst us all. I think would be the best thing, because then everybody would have their opinion and, you know, can speak, you know, to that. Good. Anyone else? All right, we will then move on to Chairman's Report. I really don't have much. The one thing, I guess, that Christmas and Clinton is back on Sunday, so obviously, that's going to be something that we haven't had the past couple of years, so just, you know, obviously, put the word out. I know it's out there, but it's something that is really a great, you know, a great thing for this town. People do come out, and not only people from our town, but from all over. So I think that's something that is great, that we're back and up and running with that. And then lastly, just want to actually congratulate all the student athletes that participated in sports on this fall season. There was a lot of success with our soccer teams, both boys and girls, and also with the football team, who unfortunately lost last night, but have a lot to be proud of for what they did, obviously with the new coach coming on. So obviously, congratulations to all those student athletes that participated in fall sports. That is it for me. Town managers' report.
You have my written reports. The Historic Preservation Grant for Commerce Lefingwell. As a historic district, the study grant is supposed to be on the agenda for later this morning with the State Historic Preservation Office, so they'll be making a decision to make that grant award in an hour and a half. So we'll see where we stand with that. I know Peggy Adler's going to be tuning into the meeting to watch what the decision is, and if there's any questions, she can respond to Shippo. At your next meeting, I'm going to, I have two items that I'm going to be looking for council concurrence on. So first is with MIRA to sign a new agreement, which at least sees our solid waste being dealt with through MIRA until the end of the project, which is five more years, involves shipping waste out of state, and if there's other state public policies that intervene that address what solid waste is, how solid waste is handled, that will be to be determined. But we do need to amend our agreement with MIRA that's been in place for a number of years. This, for those of you that were on the council before, eliminates our opt-out out of MIRA. That was a flexibility before. The request is that that flexibility go away in order to ensure dedicated waste streams. The dedicated waste stream allows them to get cheaper pricing to ship garbage to the West.
Solar plus battery back.
The other item I'll have, need some council action on, is participation in a opiates glass-action settlement. These things are working their way through the court system. The first up is a settlement with Johnson &amp; Johnson. Every municipality is being encouraged to participate and sign up as a registered participant. While it may not mean direct dollars to us, it will mean more dollars to the state of Connecticut, which then theoretically would percolate out to the local level. The dollars have to be restricted to responding to opiate overdoses and the knock-on effects of that in individual communities. So I need authorization from the council before signing any papers to release a claim against Johnson &amp; Johnson. against Johnson &amp; Johnson.
I have a question related to that. Quite a while ago, I sat down with the police chief to discuss exactly what the process would be, and there was a requirement that the town actually provide the data as to the number of call-outs and hours associated with it. At the time, the police chief said he was not able to accrue that data through the process that they have in their police department. Has that changed? And how much time will be associated with staff at the police department to account for all the information that would be required, if it is required?
That information hasn't been required. So it's simply signing off as somebody who's interested.
Is this a different, because you've mentioned Johnson &amp; Johnson. The previous one was the class action lawsuit that was coming out of the attorney general's office. That was the, I apologize, you can't remember the larger class action.
This is a larger class action lawsuit that goes across the country, and it's being coordinated through attorney general's office. And Connecticut's attorney general did join the class action.
Is this the same one from approximately three years ago? Or is this a different one?
I'm not sure what was going on three years ago. This is Johnson &amp; Johnson. The others are still in pipeline.
Okay. So I guess I'd just like clarification, because again, the police chief did indicate that in the past, we wouldn't have been able to participate. And if it is the previous one that is still building, and at some point, if we are going to have to provide that documentation for the town to be able to be awarded any funds?
We are not being asked for that information. So that's all I can tell you right now. We are not being asked for that information. We are being asked to participate. We are not being asked to provide information. Nothing coming out from the AG's office or CCM or other agencies are saying you have to provide that information. Included in the COG report is forward progress at the regional level, creating an economic development district, which is the first step to securing more federal funding for economic development in this area. Our region is the only part of the state of Connecticut that does not have a comprehensive economic development strategy, or SEDs, which is the key to getting federal dollars to support economic development activity. So the COG is going to apply to the state to be designated as a regional economic development district. The Economic Development Agency at the federal level is going to fund the SEDs study to be completed. And assuming that that's accepted by the state, then ultimately accepted by the feds, then the region can be eligible for more dollars to encourage better economic development in the region, which those dollars have gone to other parts of the state, but not this part of the state. Two items I did flag in my report is needing more guidance from the council on. So first was facility use policy. There's been a request to waive some of our fees. We normally charge people a rental fee to use the building, and then there is a fee for the custodian. The request is that Clinton-based nonprofits not be charged the facility fee and only pay the custodial fee. So a Clinton-based for-profit or a non-Clinton-based entity would still pay the building fee. Looking over the last two years of fee experience, I can't really, you know, sometimes a for-profit, a nonprofit pays, sometimes a nonprofit doesn't pay, so it's kind of been up and down. It's not a huge whack to the budget. It's maybe three to four grand a year is what the total generated revenue is out of these facility use fees.
What was the fee?
Depends on what room they're using and for how long. So the smallest fee is $50, the largest fee, $500. But then those that have longer events, obviously rack up more. So I would need to amend the policy and bring that back to the council if that's your desire. I just need some feedback that that's where you want to go, so that I can write up a policy for action.
I think waiving the fee for nonprofits would be probably the way to go.
I think that sounds like a good idea.
Yeah.
It would certainly create more equity in terms of the different organizations, because currently there is some policies that have been unspoken for a very long period of time and they don't always get applied equally. So having it on the books would certainly help that.
Good.
I'll prepare that for your next meeting. Next item I wanted some blessing on was the wayfinding signage. So when I prepared the steep grant for the facade program, I also included that we would be doing some wayfinding signage to update the signs at Commerce Street and Grove, that directs traffic down towards the shoreline. And then we were going to try and update the sign that's located at exit 63. I sent out to you mockups of what it would look like at the two primary locations. We don't have a mockup yet for exit 63. I just want to make sure that the council is okay with this from an appearance standpoint. We think we're okay with the DOT. It's a like-for-like replacement, so we don't believe we've got DOT issues. It's really just more whatever the local decision-making process is. In this particular case, it uses a design that was developed previously. I don't think the town council acted to approve it. We're now actually going to put it in use if these designs go forward. So I just want to make sure that this is something that the council is okay with before we start placing orders, gearing up.
I just have a question on it. The design looked great, but I don't know if I was supposed to focus on the names that are on it, but is there reason one business would be on it and one wouldn't be? Or is there, you know, there was like five businesses?
Replace like-for-like, so what you've got there are the businesses that are currently on those signs at present. So it's the. I'm looking for is the top of the sign for the council to bless the aesthetics.
Yeah.
From a policy standpoint, the EDC has talked about how we should be positioning. Should we put new people up there, keep the same people, don't put anybody up there? So the conversation was, at their level, like-for-like, keep the existing people on who are existing businesses.
I just would like to comment on that. I think we're opening ourselves up to a can of worms. In the past, there's been a lot of controversy in town as to which names are going on those signs. There's been no fee associated with it and no application. So either the town goes through a process of managing it publicly and allowing people to either bid or apply to be on the sign in a rotating fashion, which then puts more responsibility, admin responsibility, on potentially your office, Carl. The other option, which was discussed a while ago, was standardizing signage. And I will speak to this, because this is something I've been working on through pretty much my entire career, doing master planning for towns and cities around the world, where we actually did signage to install that was consistent and spoke to the community. And typically, what you do is you do directional signage, which is train station, downtown, arts district, town hall, post office, and that directs people around town. And it creates a standard for people to see. Parking, which has been a huge issue in the town, it'd be great if we had signage that directs people to the parking. So that would be my recommendation, is to stay away from directing people to specific businesses, only because, again, we're opening ourselves up to that issue, which has been the same conversation as to who goes on the signage, and standardize them across town in terms of typical city-town directional signage, which is the generic terms. Just my recommendation of.
I'd like to see both, to tell you the truth. I think that, I mean, hopefully, ARPA will be able to cover some of that for, under tourism. I don't know.
This is under a separate grant. So we already have these dollars.
No, but I mean, perhaps further signage, adding to what it is that you have there.
So right now, basically, we're looking at a like-for-like signage. What you need from the council is a blessing on, obviously, the signage as far as the name and the heading of this, and as far as everything else goes, that's really not even kind of what we're discussing right now.
The branding is the one thing that was, has not been adopted by the council, so this would be moving forward with that. And I'm looking for that the council is okay with that, so that that becomes a theme going forward.
Okay. So as a council, are we good with that? Okay.
Can I ask another question? Who would oversee the future of these signs? I mean, if there's a new business or a business leaves and the businesses are listed on there, who would oversee keeping the signs updated and tidy, well-painted and all that? Would that be the town manager? Or would you hand this off to, say, the EDC?
That keeps it all under the town umbrella, so we can figure out what part of the town umbrella. It's clear that the signs were not well-maintained going forward. Some people painted and updated, other people didn't paint and update. Some are difficult to read, others are not difficult to read.
Right, right. And I think the uniformity and the upkeep is key to, you know, making it relevant to the situation. That's why I'm asking, it seems to me as though people were just creating a plaque and putting it up there from time to time. I don't know who they were going to.
There was some consistency in look. It's just.
At the beginning.
No consistency in maintenance. And so some of them were updated. The shade of blue was maybe lighter on one and darker on another.
Some have gold filling and some don't, and, yeah. So that's my, that's a concern.
Well, I mean, I think uniformity, I mean, obviously, is important, and that's what it should be. So I think this is the first step.
So my question is, who over, who?
We're going to have Carl paint it when they get, when they start chipping. He said he'll paint.
No, but that's a key element.
Right, but I mean, that's, this is the first step of it.
Two years from now.
Right. So, you know, we good with the conformity, yes. Okay, then we're going to put everything else in process. The EDC, obviously, you know, Carl made reference to as far as that whole process goes. So, I mean, it's just, again, having something that's here, that's been approved by the town, and a kind of a procedure in place going forward, so that everybody knows how it will be handled going forward.
In the past, the Public Works has managed some of the signs in town, and they consistently work with the same vendor, if this is the vendor we're ultimately choosing. So that's another option.
Yeah. I mean, again, that's. You know, Carl will get that direction and take care of it.
Budgeting it and moving forward with regular maintenance expense.
So we're good with what we've been presented today?
Just for clarity, we're not talking about the content within the sign, though.
That is correct.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Are you sure?
No.
Carl, were we talking about the content?
I was looking for direction on the branding piece, which comprises the top component. If you want to discuss the bottom part, I'd leave that up to you guys to discuss that. If you want to go through that process, you're more welcome to go through that process.
I mean, I think that's the discussion down the road.
Okay.
Right? I mean, because there's got to be some sort of.
Can it be down the road? I guess Carl's looking sort of, can it be down the road? And we have to start moving.
We kind of have to set things in motion. So if we're going to order and whatnot, I need to know what we're ordering. So if you want to have like-for-like and have the individual businesses there, then that's fine, and we place the order to that effect.
And a like-for-like alleviates any other problems that we may have with the DOT?
DOT is only concerned about the, sort of, the pegs that go in the ground. So this mass of the sign, the configuration of the sign, how it gets attached, that's their overriding concern, that it's not going to be something new, something that's stone, something that's going to cause more issue from a traffic safety standpoint. So this general framework means we can move quickly with the DOT and not get hung up in that bureaucratic box. If you want to change the content, that's up to you to decide.
When I'm speaking to that term, I agree with Christine that if there's not parking, something saying parking someplace on there, that should be on there, because that is important to the people. They come down, especially visitors coming in, they don't know where our secret parking light is behind short TV and, you know, all that. They just look at Main Street and say, oh, man, when am I going to park? You know, on these little street. So I agree that if there's something that doesn't direct people to the adequate parking, it should be on that sign or a sign somewhere, because if we want people to come downtown, they have to know where to park.
As Carl said, this isn't the issue just now, but I agree with you.
Well, it has to be, I guess.
But I agree with you, there should be more signage, but it's not in this package. I agree with you, there should definitely be more signage.
So there'll be no parking at all on either one of these signs? Okay, all right. I just want to understand that.
The one at Grove, there is no parking near Grove.
Right.
That's all directional to.
Oh, yeah. That goes downtown to the shore.
To go down to the shore and what's immediately in it. Commerce would be the one where you'd put on parking, and I guess the arrow would go.
Yeah.
See where his pants. There's a slot there.
Is there a slot there for that?
You look at the bottom, there's a slot there.
I would like to make the suggestion that the parking be added to the bottom of that sign to direct people to take a left and go to parking. If there's a slot there and nobody else's name is on it, it helps.
So another element that is typical on a signage that is being developed across the country is you usually put the number of feet and/or number of miles. Either you could do it walking and/or distance for driving as well, which is very typical on wayfinding signage. And unfortunately, if we don't add that, I think we're not keeping up with the times in terms of directing people. Parking's great. If we can't tell them 200 feet, .4 miles, people are going to keep just driving, they're not going to know where to go.
Well, I'm not trying to be facetious, but when they take that left, they'll know.
You only got 100 feet before you hit the truck.
You only got 100 feet, you're either going to hit that stone bridge that you can't walk under now or take a right. But I agree with you. I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be funny or make fun of you or anything, but, yeah, I do agree that, you know, if you want, I don't know, do you put on each one of those going down towards the water and all, you want to say one, two miles or?
That's what's pretty typical with standard signage that's going on right now. You do directional signage with the amount of distance, especially the one at 63. 63, that's going to be important.
Oh, that's different, right. We're not dealing with that right now.
63 needs a different, a different.
No, I agree with you about 63.
And typically, when you come up with a signage program, you do it cohesively, you do it holistically, and you do it all at once. So you determine how much signage you need, where they're going to be, and assess the number of locations. But that's a, you know, that's a very big project, and I don't know what EDC's up for that task, or whether they are the body that should be assigned to such a thing either.
Well, I mean, my personal opinion is, these little signs here in the center going to the shore, that's not a long trip. It's only a mile or two, so I don't think it would be necessary on them, but maybe in the future on that one at 63, that might be something to think about. I mean, that's just my personal. But I would like to see that parking at the last slot.
So as far as this discussion as presented with an addition of a parking signage on the last?
Yes.
For directional to that?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Good? Tom?
Yep.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Anything else?
That's it.
Good. Thank you, Carl.
Good.
Item number nine, which is the town council liaison reports. Is there anybody that has anything to report? I don't think anybody's been to meetings yet, right? All right. Nothing there, then we're looking for a motion to adjourn. The second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Thank you.
Thanks for that suggestion.